Good evening. The June 21st, 2021 Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anorond County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Schuet.
Present.
Mr. Gibson.
Present.
Madam Chair, all seven council members are here. In addition, we have Ms. Schuet, Legislative Council, and Mr. Gibson, a representative from the Auditor's Office with us this evening.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have Bishop Antonio Palmer with us?
It does not appear that he has joined the meeting yet.
Well, it is my turn to give the invocation, so I invited Bishop Palmer to give it, and I confirmed with him earlier today that he would be here, so I don't know. Maybe he's just joined, or perhaps not.
I've been watching. There are some storms in the area. I'm wondering if he was potentially affected by that. I have heard that some people have had internet troubles because of quick storms.
Okay, well, I'm not going to hold everything up. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll lead the invocation this evening. Ask that everyone keep in mind the safety of the traveling public going through our storms and through our first responders and responding to anybody who ends up having any issue. Hopefully, there will be none, but everyone be safe. I'll keep you in mind. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked me to read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. The virtual format of the meeting, this meeting of the county council, is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is still necessary in light of health risks associated with public gatherings. While the virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and the web, allowing written comments from the public to be submitted and considered by the council ahead of time, and allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, this technology satisfies the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to meetings, and they do not need to be waived in order for this virtual meeting to be held.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one submission through the online testimony tool that was shared with the council. It's been posted to the website and has been added to the meeting pile.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak during the invitation to audience. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. I would like to join as a co-sponsor for Resolution 32-21, if the sponsor is so inclined to accept my co-sponsorship.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
Allison Pruski, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 2nd, 7th, 8th, and 14th, 2021.
June 2nd, 2021. The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Pruski gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. June 7th, 2021. The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at 6:00 p.m. Ms. Fiedler gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. June 8th, 2021. The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at 1:00 p.m. Ms. Radvian gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance. June 14th, 2021. The meeting was called to order by Chair Sarah Lacy at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Hare gave the invocation and led the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 7th, 8th, and 14th, 2021?
Radvian, so moved.
Allison Pickard, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of June 2nd, 7th, 8th, and 14th, 2021 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6321, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Critical Area Overlay. Bill Number 6421, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Housing Authority of the City of Annapolis. Bill Number 6521, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning, Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay Area. Bill Number 6621, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Parking, Non-Residential Outdoor Lighting and Signage, Prohibited Signs, and Temporary Signs.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 3421, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-Owned Property Located in Glen Burnie, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Here the storm line is just hitting my house, so if you lose me, you'll know why. Okay, let's go to our bills. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4821 as amended.
Bill Number 4821, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Alcoholic Beverage Uses as Accessory to Other Uses.
Ms. Radvian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. So I hope my colleagues will support this bill, which is basically a code correction to take away a requirement that was put in in sort of an unusual manner, and additionally to clarify the minimum amount of floor space for this accessory use.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, does the administration have any comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the county council. Pete Barron with the administration, joining me at the virtual table, hopefully for the last night ever with a virtual table, Mr. Stephen Kai-Ziegler and Ms. Lynn Miller from OPZ and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. The administration commented on this bill in the previous meeting. Just reiterate, we want to thank the sponsor for working on the issue with our team, and we're looking forward to signing the bill.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none at this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4821 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony.
We do not have anyone signed up to speak on Bill Number 4821 as amended. The public hearing on Bill Number 4821 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4821 as amended.
Bill Number 4821, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Alcoholic Beverage Uses as Accessory to Other Uses.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 4821 as amended.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 4821 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4921 as amended.
Bill Number 4921, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Special Exception Uses Assistant Living Facilities.
Ms. Pickard and Mr. Volkey are the co-sponsors of this bill. Whichever of you would like to speak to the bill, you're welcome to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District 2. At our last meeting, we did a couple of quick amendments to this bill, and I did mention that we had a diagram to show which really illustrates the point of this bill, and I was hoping we could take a minute as I talk a little bit about the general reason for the bill. We can look at that diagram, just because I promised to provide it. So if you look, you'll see on the screen small individual cottages, and then in the, which is, you know, a real live photo, but also the diagram above where you see the larger assisted living multifamily building, and then the community that surrounds it with little single-level cottage clusters that would create the entire assisted living community. And I think this is, this bill allows Anorond County to expand the way assisted living looks and feels, and it provides a new, modern, additional product for assisted living facilities in Anorond County. So this, I thought this diagram was illustrative of the bill, and I thought it was helpful for not only my colleagues, but the public. So with that, I do think we have, there are a couple amendments tonight. If anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer them, but we did discuss this bill at the last meeting, so thank you.
Mr. Volkey, did you want to speak to the bill?
Nothing to add at this point. I'll wait until we get to the amendments.
Okay, and Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration, sticking with me is Mr. Kai-Ziegler and Ms. Miller from OPZ and Ms. Kenny. I think the sponsor covered it well. Happy to hold our comments until the discussion on the forthcoming amendments.
All right. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 4921 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony on Bill 4921.
We do not have anyone signed up to speak on Bill Number 4921 as amended. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number 4921 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 4921 as amended.
Bill Number 4921, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Special Exception Uses Assistant Living Facilities.
All right, at this time, we do have a couple of amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3. This amendment allows the minimum lot size for an assisted living facility as a special exception used to be reduced by 50% when the facility abuts a nursing home or adult independent dwelling units, whether or not owned by the same entity, and allows the facility to be operated in conjunction with a nursing home and adult independent dwelling units, whether or not owned by the same entity.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, you are the sponsor of this amendment. You may make a brief statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. This particular amendment is, the easiest way to describe it is, keep like things together. So the concept is, if you already have either a nursing home or adult independent dwelling units, you would have the ability to potentially abut that with an assisted living facility, and you would get slightly lower acreage requirements if you were abutting those other types of uses already. So this allows people to continue the idea we talk about a lot, which is age and place, the idea that you may already be in one of these types of living arrangements already, and you can now move over to the assisted living facility as well. It's just a concept to kind of put these like things together. So that's the idea with it. If you have any questions, please let me know. Ms. Schuet is candidly the expert on this.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
Allison Pickard, second.
Thank you both. All right, and do we have any discussion? Or I should say, Mr. Barron, I don't know if you wanted to go first. You can, but if you're not ready, you don't have to.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the sponsors' intent. I think the administration would agree with the general concept. I think our concern with this amendment sort of stems from maybe needing a little additional clarity on exactly how it's constructed and what we're trying to achieve here and making sure that it, the administration, and more importantly, the folks at OPZ are able to effectively implement it. So I'm going to ask Ms. Miller, just to make a couple of quick comments on sort of our concern with this amendment. If you can, Ms. Miller, I know you're a little remote today, and if you can't, maybe Mr. Kai-Ziegler can back up for you.
Hi, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I'll take a stab at it, and Mr. Kai-Ziegler or the Law Office can add on. I think our concern is that, as constructed, it appears that there may be a sort of conflict within the bill between a couple of the provisions and the special exception of the bill. So Amendment 3 seems to be indicating that some of the different components of a development, for example, the ALF versus the AIDUs, can be owned by separate entities. And our Law Office has interpreted other provisions in this bill as indicating that all of the components or the elements of the development would need to be operated in conjunction with each other, which implies common ownership. So I think we did get some clarity from the sponsors as to their intent. I think our concern is the way the bill's constructed and whether it's creating conflicts, and therefore whether we're going to be able to apply it to an actual development application without having problems. And Greg or Kelly or Steve, please feel free to add on.
Hello, Steve Kai-Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Actually, I think Ms. Miller said it very, very well. You know, philosophically, I don't think the Office of Planning and Zoning is opposed to what the council is trying to do. We recognize your intent. We just need to be able to implement it on our end if we get a development application. And so I think we're having a pretty interesting debate on the legalese that the words need to have in order for us to implement this as the council appears to be intended to do. So I guess at this point, I would defer to Kelly Kenny and perhaps share your thoughts on, you know, the Office of Law's advice to OPZ and how we would actively implement this language as drafted so far.
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Just to add on to what Ms. Miller and Mr. Kai-Ziegler said, as Ms. Miller indicated, that this language does create a little bit of a clarity issue with regard to the Office of Law's interpretation, the Office of Planning and zoning's interpretation, because the law currently, and even in the bill, requires unified control of the entire facility. And with the addition of this language in the amendment, which basically says that the ALFs can be operated in conjunction with the adult independent dwelling units or nursing home, whether or not they're owned by the same entity, does create a conflict between that provision and the existing provision, which is not being changed under the bill that requires that unified control. So it does create an ambiguity for the Office of Law and for Planning and zoning when they get an application in as to how to apply that in the future.
Ms. Hare, do you mind if I call in Ms. Schuet first? Ms. Schuet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Kenny. The way I read the existing law with respect to unified control is that it only relates to the entire assisted living facility. It doesn't say anything about needing to have control over a nursing home, for example, or adult independent dwelling units. So I'm not understanding what you see as a clarity problem.
Sure. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I can add to that. The Office of Law has looked at this in the past and as well, you know, in conjunction with this bill, and we do interpret that the assisted living facility is the entire facility, which does include the adult independent dwelling units and the nursing home, because they're operated in conjunction with each other. So we have interpreted that to mean the entire facility. So if you have the adult independent dwelling units operated in conjunction with the assisted living facility, they in essence are part of that assisted living facility and subject to that provision. And it may just need to be clarified if that's not the intent, because to me, it's even more unclear with the addition of the new language.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just want to make sure, and I think the answer to this is yes, but if we adopt Amendment Number 3 and this reduction in acreage is put in place, all of the other bulk regulations in terms of, you know, the 50% or 60% open area, you know, in RLDR1, R2, and R5 still applies, that would still be there. It just would be on a reduced acreage basis, right? I see nodding heads. Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D2. It's my understanding, and obviously, I'm not an attorney, but the way this bill is constructed is, when we were discussing unified control, that was between a multifamily assisted living and the assisted living cottages that would be on the same lot. That needed to be all under unified control of an assisted living licensed care facility. This new amendment that talks about reduced acreage is regarding if we already have a nursing home or adult, active adult independent dwelling unit community somewhere, and there is a parcel next door, you don't have to have, you know, the 10 or five full acres to put an assisted living. But that has nothing to do with the unified control issue. I'm clear on it, and I'm clear with the way it's drafted. I'm not sure I'm following, but, you know, you lawyers went to school for a lot longer than I did, so I'm good with this amendment.
Sarah Lacy, D1. As much as we lawyers did go to school longer than you did, Ms. Pickard, the law needs to be accessible and understandable by folks without a law degree. So your comments and questions are always well brought. Are there any other comments or questions on Amendment Number 3? We have some scary lightning over here. That's why I have a furry creature with me. Okay, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 4.
Amendment Number 4. This amendment provides that all assisted care units be located on the same lot.
Thank you, and this amendment is co-sponsored by Ms. Pickard and Mr. Volkey. Whichever of you would like to speak to it, go ahead.
Happy to start off, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. This is really, as I understand it, kind of a cleanup amendment to the last amendment, just to ensure that there are no questions about sort of how these can be located. So we just want to ensure that all of the assisted care units are on the same lot, whatever type they are. This is to ensure that we don't get unintended consequences from this bill and the amendment that we just passed.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
Allison Pickard, second.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. This amendment comes out of discussions that the administration had with the sponsors, and obviously, we support this. I think our whole goal is not, concerns around the intent here is making sure that OPZ can implement the bill.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 4921 is amended. Will be heard on July 6th, 2021. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5321.
Bill Number 5321, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation and Transfer of Funds.
Mr. Pruski.
Yes, Madam Chair. Per ethics protocol, I just want to go on the record that my spouse is employed with the school system. I have filed an ethics waiver, but I just want to get it part of the record. Thank you.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Radvian, District 6. Similarly to my colleague in District 4, I want to disclose that I have, and I have part-time employee in Anorond County Public Schools, I have also disclosed or filed a statement with the Ethics Commission.
Thank you both. I don't know whether Mr. Barron or Mr. Shaknovich would like to go first.
How about this? I will, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. I am going to hand it off to Mr. Shaknovich, but after I introduce Mr. Stansky, who's also with the Board of Education, and Mr. Theroux from our Budget Office, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. With that, Mr. Shaknovich, it's all you.
Thank you and good evening. I appreciate your indulgence as you consider Bill 5321. It is an annual budgetary closeout and cleanup bill. I want to thank Mr. Theroux in the Office of Budget and draw your attention to the auditor's letter that was issued relative to the bill on June 2nd, 2021, which does an excellent job reviewing the transactional elements of the bill, including the recognition of some additional federal and state revenues that came as a part of the bill, approximately $173,300 in federal revenue and $926,000 of, I'm sorry, of state revenue. And with that, we're prepared to entertain any questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Mr. Shaknovich, thank you for being with us this evening. Just have a few questions as I'm trying to understand this particular fourth-quarter transfer over the course of time. Looking back as far as 2017, it seems to be that we each year have a fourth-quarter transfer, transferring out of salaries and wages, on an average of the last four years, a little over $6 million. Does that sound accurate to you? I know that you don't have this info in front of you.
Sure. I don't have the older figures. I mean, this bill has about $2.6 million, and as the auditor's findings disclose, it's almost entirely attributable to reduction of the utilization of substitute teachers and the curtailment of training and professional development activities that were severely restricted as a part of COVID. So it's about $2.6 in the bill before you, and again, attributable to substitute salaries and curtailed training activities.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a follow-up. Since this year was a bit unique, can you just off the top of your head recall in the past where the money has come from as far as in, in the past where the, the money has come from as far as, were it, were it retirement or teachers resigning? That we had this overage in salaries and wages for the fourth quarter transfer?
So turnover certainly, just much like the county, right? So turnover is certainly always a, a factor we do throughout the course of the year. Lose personnel due to retirement, resignations, relocations. And then it's also a factor of the cost of the employee that's brought in to replace. So we have a salary scale. For example, if somebody's fresh out of college, Ms. Fiedler, they're brought in at a, at a, the lowest, lowest or nearly the lowest rung on our salary scale. If they're brought in with some experience, it can be creditable either from another jurisdiction or from another state, then they could potentially be brought in at a, at a higher rung on that. So that is certainly the largest part of it. And then, in addition to turnover, their salary lapse. So typically, when somebody departs on a Friday, the replacement's not there on a Monday. There is a, a gap in which recruitment, interviews, et cetera, occurs. So that does accumulate towards the savings if you're strictly speaking about personnel costs. Again, the rest in even another years is attributable to an extent to substitute teachers and training that was not fully utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. So in looking at the auditor's blue letter from the last meeting, July, excuse me, wrong month, June the seventh, it looks like one of the increases is fourteen million for textbooks, instructional supplies altogether. It talks about that's for Chromebooks, technology, athletic supplies, and an additional supply stipend for teaching staff. Can you break out what the supply stipend was for teaching staff? And how much more you had to spend on Chromebooks? Because I think a lot of the CARES money was actually, I thought, used on purchasing those early on when the COVID nineteen funds came in.
Sure, so customarily, our teaching workforce receives a, an hundred dollar per teacher salary. It, it's essentially a reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses. And that typically occurs in the fall, it will occur in October. But this note recognizing that the faculty in many cases did not have full utilization of the school building, did not have access to, you know, some of the supply closets, things like that, Mr. Volkey, that their out-of-pocket expenditures were greater than they customarily would be. And because of that, the superintendent recommended and the board concurred that the teachers would receive a second one hundred dollar per faculty member increment, and that occurred into spring. So that second hundred dollar per teacher was not contemplated. We've got, you know, rough order of magnitude, just say seven thousand teachers, to keep it simple, a hundred dollars per, that's seven hundred thousand dollars. And yes, the, the vast, the remaining elements of it were attributable to the unanticipated technology acquisitions that you referenced earlier when we had to, to switch to the online learning format. We did receive some monies through the CARES funding to offset a portion of that, but it did not fully offset the cost of going to a one-to-one device ratio or platform where we currently find ourselves in.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Shaknovich, if, if on an annual basis, there is an overage in salaries and wages, can you explain why, why the school system could not keep that money in salaries and wages and redistribute among the units? Or a unit?
So a, a couple parts of that. As you may recall, that in this year, there was, through a mediated settlement or arbitration process, there was a mid-year increase for, for the Unit One employees, tax members specifically, at a half-year cost of approximately three point one million dollars. That was not recommended for funding via either county executive's budget or the budget that was ultimately adopted by the county council. So that funding, part of that funding is required to fall to fund balance to support the ongoing costs of that mid-year step increase that the Unit One employees. So that's part of the answer. The other part of the answer, though, is we are required basically to have a balanced budget at the end where our appropriations meet our expenditures, which is what this bill does. There is not a, there's not really a mechanism to utilize money unilaterally in any way to redistribute it back to employees. As you know, here in the state of Maryland, to begin with, any employee compensation is a mandatory topic of bargaining under the Public School Relations Board Act. So anything in that regard would have to be negotiated and not, and not unilaterally imposed. But again, in summary, we are required to have a balanced budget, right? So the monies went, in this case, as Madam Auditor's letter clearly articulated, really went to expenditures that we would have not had seen had it been but for the, the COVID phenomenon.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shaknovich, question about moving the seventeen million, seventeen six from pupil transportation. You obviously had contracts with the vendors, the bus providers, I guess. Ultimately, the buses were not running for that period of time because kids weren't in school. Were you, I guess I'm just trying to understand, there was no contractual obligation to pay those vendors even in light of the situation?
Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer for Arnold County Public Schools. Mr. Volkey, the answer is yes, there, there is to an extent or degree. The way that their contracts are situated are there are minimal or ongoing costs that have to be covered, and I'll give you a very good example. So buses are purchased and capitalized over a lifespan of twelve years. So there's monthly lease, essentially the mortgage on the bus. Those are obligatory costs that are in the contract that we cover. There's other costs, for example, that are utilization-driven, and fuel would be an example, right? So while the ongoing lease or mortgage payment on the bus is covered, whether the buses were rolling or not, and that's within the contract, something like fuel, to the extent that it wasn't being consumed, was not being paid. And I just picked two examples to try to illustrate my, my point. So within the contracts, there are a number of subcategories, some of which, again, capitalization costs, insurance costs on the units, et cetera, do continue, whether the, the actual wheels are rolling or not.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I will remind everyone that the public hearing on Bill Number Fifty-three twenty-one was concluded at our June seventh meeting, and we held the vote until today. We do have an amendment, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment decreases the transfer from federal and state grants, increases the transfer from mid-level administration, pupil transportation, and community services, decreases transfer from instructional salaries and wages and pupil services, adds transfers from special education, health services, and fixed charges, and decreases the appropriations to the administration and other instructional costs, increases the appropriations to textbooks and classroom supplies, operation of plant, maintenance of plant, and capital outlay, removes appropriations for special education and fixed charges, and adds appropriations for food service.
Thank you, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. This amendment trues up the numbers to what the Board of Education passed on their May nineteenth meeting, and Mr. Shaknovich or Mr. Stansky or Mr. Theroux can probably provide any additional details that the council requires.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard?
Second?
Radvian, second.
Mr. Barron was starting to sweat there, thanks, Ms. Radvian. I'm just kidding. Okay, are there any questions for our panel? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Shaknovich, I'm hoping you can just give us a little bit more detail because the, the auditor's note just says that this is based on votes that were taken at the Board of Ed. Do you have a little bit more line item detail or specifically why some of these numbers are changing and what, what it might change, what that means as a practical matter?
Yes, ma'am, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer for the school district. I'll, I'll begin, and I'm sure Mr. Theroux can, can round out any things, anything that I might miss. So the council has a, has essentially a legislative calendar, right? A, a clock on legislation that does require the legislation to be remitted so that the official public notices can be given, bills can be read into the record, opportunities for public testimony, et cetera. And Councilwoman Hare, in, in some years, it works out beautifully in that the Board of Education takes its final official action before the legislation is introduced before the council. But in some years, it, it simply does not by virtue of the differentials between the council's calendar and the board's calendar. And this unfortunately was one of those years. So the, the Budget Office analyzing the school system's records, et cetera, remitted a piece of legislation that was their best estimate because all of our financials are shared with, with the county government. You've got access to all of our numbers. And then when the board took its final vote, you can see that in some categories, there were some minor adjustments. So the Board of Education, as Mr. Barron indicated, voted late on a Wednesday evening, early on a Thursday morning. We transmitted the final recorded vote and supporting documents over to the Budget Office and, and Madam Auditor's office. And the amendment basically trues up or reconciles what those initial, initial assumptions were by the Budget Office versus where we landed. And again, I'm sure Mr. Theroux could, could help with the rest of, of whatever I might have missed.
Yes, you can go ahead, there's some scary lightning here, sorry, so. Go ahead, I might turn off my video while I talk to you.
Stephen Theroux from the Budget Office, I really have nothing else to add than what Mr. Shaknovich just said. I just really a matter of timing between when the board took their final vote and when we had to introduce that legislation.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So just coming off the recent budget that was before this council, I have to admit, I don't watch minute by minute the board's discussion on the budget that they work on. But do you recall from those discussions, Mr. Shaknovich, if they review or discuss the annual fourth quarter transfer that comes before the council?
Yes, ma'am, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. So the process is, it's first reviewed by the board's Budget Committee, which is a four-member subcommittee, standing committee of the board. So it's reviewed by the board's Budget Committee. And then it is reviewed by the body of a whole at a publicly televised meeting. There's a presentation by staff, naturally, all of the exhibits and documents are provided to the board members, so they have the opportunity to review that. And lastly, I'll add that the, the Board of Education's internal auditor, Mr. Fedowitz, which is equivalent to, to Ms. Bollaire, in your, in your organizational structure, staffs the board's Budget Committee. So the internal audit department also reviews those documents and would bring to the Budget Committee any concerns or discrepancies that they may have identified.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So when this information is brought forward, is it just a year snapshot, a fiscal year snapshot? Or is historical information shared? For instance, this is what has traditionally been in a fourth quarter transfer bill for the Board of Ed for the past, you know, two years or three years? Or is it just a snapshot of that, that fiscal year?
Sure, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. So to begin with, and maybe I, I should have said it earlier, customarily for the Board of Education, just like traditionally with the county, there is a second quarter supplemental appropriation and transfer bill. So typically, there's a mid-year adjustment to recognize any new revenues or any adjustments that have to occur based on unanticipated occurrences, at least up to that mid-year point. And then just like with the county, there's a fourth quarter one. So as part of the formal presentation on a, on a Wednesday evening for television, for example, no, the, the historical backwards-looking information is not provided. That is provided to the board's Budget Committee. I believe that in this case, I believe they're viewed from budget to actuals from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so a couple of years worth, Ms. Fiedler.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Shaknovich, I think I asked my previous question poorly. Not so much in the timing of things and how this came about, but what I'm trying to understand is if this amendment changes, policy-wise, anything in the initial transfer, like are we buying more Chromebooks now with this amendment? Or are we taking something out of the special education, you know, funding? Or is it that this is truly a cleanup bill and these are the fund balance type of numbers at the end of the year, and the changes are just the cleanup portion of it?
Sure, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, it's option C. If you, if you were to do a side-by-side, your Budget Office is, is very good at what they do. So as you'll see, you know, we have like fifteen state categories, and they were spot-on on many, many of those categories. So it was, it was but a few of the categories or areas that were, were touched by this amendment. So again, your Budget Office did an outstanding job, and your Madam Auditor's office also did an outstanding job in terms of vetting the, the amendment documents.
Ms. Radvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Radvian, District Six. So I have a question about, once you have gone through this process of the fourth quarter transfer and analyzing the, the transfers that need to make, be made from one budget category, from one state category to another state category, does that, you know, in terms of creating future budgets, is that information compiled to see? You know, I think my colleague, Ms. Fiedler noted that there has typically been an amount transferred from certain categories to other categories, and it tends to be the same categories year after year. Is that, are those patterns analyzed in terms of making adjustments to future budgets? And if so, how do you go about that?
So Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer for the school district, the answer directly is yes. So we always analyze, and in fact, the, the budget documents that the staff members, organizationally, that develop the, you know, budget requests on behalf of their departmental units, all the way up through the superintendent and the board, have actual expenditures, and those actual ones are the September thirty independently or externally audited figures. So you, so that input information is there at the staff level, at the superintendent level, and at the Board of Education level when the budgets are being crafted. So, you know, absolutely, we take stock of prior expenditures as input information into future requests.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I think this will be my last question for this bill. But Mr. Shaknovich, if you could share, what, what would be the consequence or would there be any consequence if this bill were to fail this evening?
So Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer, under the State's Educational Article, we're legally required to have a balanced budget. And unlike the county that simply has to have a balanced budget at the bottom line, we have an extra hurdle that is not a requirement of, of your other component units or the county. We have to have a balanced budget within each one of those fifteen categorical areas and at the bottom line. So essentially, it's a, it's an in-law requirement. Should the bill not pass, our budget would be out of balance, and we would be in violation of the State's Education Article.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I hear that a lot, that we're going to be violating something. We hear it about project open space, different things like that. What does it actually mean? Is the state going to pull back funding? Are they not going to give us future funding? What are the consequences of not being in line?
Mr. Volkey, I don't recall what the, what the exacting nature of that is. Certainly, it would, at a minimum, right, you would, you would begin with an agency or an administrative, you know, Certainly, it would, at a minimum, right, you would you would begin with an agency or an administrative, you know, rebuke. And then beyond that, it would be up to the the state if it was permissible for them to withhold funds. I know specifically, you know, for example, the the recently passed blueprint bill does invest a tremendous amount of powers in the Implementation Board and within the state board to withhold funds from school districts.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more follow-up question. This is with respect to, you know, the idea that the school that the school system has to have a balanced budget every year. But I'm curious, how does that comport with the reality that every year there is a fund balance that ends up moving forward to the next year? It does, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not a budget expert, but to me, that would seem that that means your budget is not balanced. If you end up having a revenue that's not spent in one year and then it is carried over to the next year, put, you know, to fund balance for the next year. Isn't that? Isn't that not balanced?
Again, Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer. So the fund balance that is the revenue source, and it's the revenue source that you, the council, adopt when you are adopting our budget, you know, that revenue source is prescriptive and embedded within it. So that revenue source is disclosed within the budget documents and when, you know, within the audited financial statements and has to be certified as such, otherwise we would not be able to use it as a revenue source going into the next fiscal year. So that fund balance amount, Ms. Rodvian, is is essentially disaggregated and disclosed where it resides within our budget documents.
Any other questions? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So Mr. Sheknovich, I know I said last question, this maybe the last question. I know when we talked before about this bill, I had asked questions about the money that is being transferred out of salaries and wages and into other areas, if it was already basically accounted for and committed. And you you were very kind to share and remind me that we get monthly actuary reports from the school system. So is it safe to say that at this point in time, the money that is being transferred out and into the other categories noted in the in the bill is already spoken for? And if the money is not moved, then we can't pay the bills?
Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer, that that is in fact correct. We've received, in many cases, we've received the goods, for example, the computers that were embedded within Mr. Volkey's question have been being used by our students. You know, and are very well-used now, so we couldn't return them for full price. So yes, the vendors have either provided the services, delivered the the goods, the commodities, the devices, et cetera, and we have already either paid those bills or those bills are accounts receivable knowing that we have a pay 30-day or under clause within all of our contracts. So that when we receive those bills for purchases that were made in fiscal year 21, they need to be paid by fiscal year 21 funds.
Madam Chair, may I ask one more follow-up question on this topic?
Go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Do you know, Mr. Sheknovich, if in the past or if any other jurisdiction in the state, maybe they all do, but it just seems odd to me that we historically for the past four years have had an overage in salaries and wages and we're always moving it to to other categories, but we're also hearing from all the units on pay packages. So I just question why we would not before allocating and speaking for that money in advance and and having it tied up in other categories. Why would why the approach is the way that it is? If if I'm making sense, why not, you know, keep it in salaries and wages and and not commit ourselves in other categories?
Sure. Again, Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer. So our practice is basically to budget for the positions at, you know, we are budgeted to be fully staffed. And at any given time, while we certainly have vacancies, you know, vacancies is not a is not a desired or or status that we essentially, you know, balance our budget on. So our goal was to be fully staffed. Our goal was to retain those staff through the year and should a vacancy occur, it would be to backfill that, you know, vacancy as soon as possible. I am I am not aware of other jurisdictions, going back to your first part of your question, but like I said, you know, certainly looking backwards is probably not as good a predictor of looking forwards because by virtue of having that $3.1 million not, you know, not funded within our budget request for fiscal '22 and not having the $2.3 million local revenue cut or decrease that not being backfilled by the county and its adopted budget, those two together mean that in addition to our customary about $13 million of fund balance that we're required to have, we're actually going to have to have $18.4 million of fund balance in order to start July 1 with a balanced budget.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. I think this is actually a question for our auditor or perhaps the Budget Office. I just wanted to ask a question because Mr. Sheknovich said that we are budgeted to be fully staffed. And I was just curious, is that typical practice? My understanding was that ordinarily, when you're, you know, calculating HR costs or personnel costs, that you include a a certain vacancy rate. And so if you're budgeting to be fully staffed, wouldn't that mean you're not including some sort of vacancy rate? And is that is that a a typical budget practice? So I'm I'm not sure if this is a budget or an audit question, probably both, and probably either.
Let me, Ms. Rodvian, let me start and then certainly the the other two gentlemen can chime in. So we do have, we do salary projections. So our salary base is adjusted based on our experience or projected ins and outs in terms of positions. So there is an adjustment to the salary base. But yes, we do, I mean, if you authorize us to have, you know, fill in the blank, 6,797 teachers, then that is our goal, was to have exactly that many teachers on day one and each and every day. I think one of the council's requests was to get a snapshot in time. I think actually we got the request more than once and you know, on one day, we had like 23 teachers vacant and on another day, in another month, we had like 29 teachers vacant. But that that's a very small vacancy rate in a pool of, you know, in excess of 7,000, you know, unit one members. But but with that, certainly, Mr. Thoreau or or Mr. Gibson can chime in.
Stephen Thure from the Budget Office. I would say that both on the county side and I believe for the Board of Ed side, that we do budget turnover, meaning that we do recognize that there will be some kind of turnover throughout the year of those positions. Just to put into perspective, the $2 million roughly in this fourth quarter transfer bill in terms of the Board of Education's budget is about 0.15% of the total budget within the Board of Education. On the county side, we budget for turnover as well for positions, very much like the Board of Education, but it's for their positions and turnover. That rate, if we were wrong the other way, the Board of Education or the county would be looking for money to pay those teachers, meaning if our assumptions were incorrect about turnover, we would be looking for money to pay those teachers or else theoretically, we wouldn't be able to pay those bills, meaning the teacher's salary from the county, county, county employee's salary. So there is a fine line between being too conservative, meaning we're leaving too much money on the table and being too aggressive with that turnover assumption, because the minute it goes wrong, that's a recurring cost that we're going to be looking for funding to make up for.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I I just want to make sure I'm fully grasping what we're doing here. The board has gone out and spent money that they didn't have in categories where the money wasn't there. And now because they've spent it and they have contracts that say they have to pay within 30 days, it's now an emergency for the council, because this is an emergency piece of legislation, to come in and move money between categories so that we can ensure that the bills are paid because the money's already been spent. Is that what's happening here?
Alex Sheknovich, consistent with with the practice of the county and Board of Education for at least the 20-some-odd years I've been appearing before the council, yes, because, you know, the other option would be every two weeks, we would be building, bringing a bill to the to the council, and that's not the way the county government operates or the Board of Education. Traditionally, we have a second, a mid-year and a final supplemental appropriation and transfer bill. And then should we receive any outsized grants or or abnormal inflows of revenue, we would come before the council for a potentially a first or third quarter. And we have done that in the past and we anticipate potentially needing to do that depending on the timing of of the next federal stimulus bill. And if that occurs timed correctly, we would be bringing a first quarter transfer bill to you. So again, traditionally, it's second and fourth quarter and it's first and third quarter on an as-needed ad hoc basis.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Sheknovich, on that note, I believe it might have even been our first budget cycle, we had a very similar conversation about kind of why don't we see some of this in advance? If you know that you're going to need $16 million from transportation, theoretically, you know that before, you know, three weeks before the end of the of the fiscal year. Was any of this known such that it could have been brought before the money was spent as a as a prior transfer?
Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer. Let me begin by saying this past year was kind of been different than about the prior 32 that I've been involved in this business. So the answer is yes, some things clearly can be foreseen, but you know, did I think that I was going to wind up doing 85% of what I wound up doing this past year because of COVID? No. And so the, you know, how much PPE or hand sanitizer or disinfecting wipes or disinfecting spray are we going to use? I have no idea because I've never used any of those products in my whole life. So, you know, it's really until you begin getting some experience in terms of utilization that you can make some of these, you know, better decisions. With respect to the computers, you know, to Mr. Volkey's point, you know, certainly, we did not anticipate having to go to a one-to-one device platform. We did. We had anticipated some additional or more expedient federal funds for those, you know, in order to fund those. That funding did not arrive or arrive in time. We did not get the, you know, notice of grant awards to the to the satisfaction that the county's comptroller could certify the funds or that we could certify the funds on an evidentiary basis. And therefore, some of those had to be taken out of our conventional operating budget instead of covered by some of the grant activities. So I will say this year was much messier than than the norm.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. This this is just really a final comment, not so much a question. I think the the shared frustration among me and several of my colleagues is that this idea, and I I feel like I'm echoing words one of my colleagues said last year or the year before, that, you know, we are considered the final fiscal authority and we carefully we carefully determine how, you know, what parts of the budget we are going to approve, where we are going to make shifts, where we, you know, we haven't really made a whole lot of cuts. We want to, we've been, our policy decision has been generous towards the Board of Education, but the fourth quarter transfer and really to a lesser degree, the second quarter transfer, because I think if, you know, the council were to deny a second quarter transfer, AACPS would have time to adjust. But given the timeline with the fourth quarter transfer, it really puts us in a situation where we don't, where where we basically are giving up that authority. And, you know, we had decided last, this this time last year, a little bit earlier than this time last year, that we we wanted this in this category and this in this category and this in this category. And, you know, when it comes back to us in in this transfer, it feels like, well, we we don't really have a choice and the decisions we made, you know, when we created this budget a year ago are are not really being honored. So I think that's the frustration and I'm certainly not laying that at your feet because I know that's, like, like you said, this has been the practice for a very long time. This has definitely been an exceptional year. And I think that no one wants to, no one is going to, you know, be judgmental about, you know, oh, my goodness, we needed more hand sanitizer or we needed to buy more Chromebooks or whatnot. But it is a very frustrating aspect of the process and it's certainly something that I would want to look into perhaps with our with our state legislators, because it does feel like, you know, there's this this step missing from the process where we're here to approve something and we we don't even really have the oversight to say no without putting AACPS in a serious bind. And again, this is not, of course, this is not directed at at you, Mr. Sheknovich, or really at AACPS. It's the process, the way it is. And I just, you know, I feel like it sort of robs of us, robs us of our oversight role.
Mr. Pruski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, District Four. I just want to remind everybody that we have an elected Board of Education and they voted on this. Mr. Sheknovich, just as part of the record, what was the vote for the submission of the fourth quarter transfer?
Alex Sheknovich, Chief Operating Officer. I I believe, Mr. Pruski, it was unanimous, I believe. But I'm I'm relying on recollection only.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, if I could just follow up. Thank you, Mr. Sheknovich. But but again, I want to remind everyone, I agree that we could certainly look at this process, but this has been going on for 20 years. And if there is a process to to change, we can certainly do that. But we did have an elected board who sent this over to us. And this is what they're asking us to approve. The question comes down to is what changes for the future? And again, I I understand, I appreciate the discussion, but ultimately, this county moved to an elected board and they should be held responsible for the funds in there. And I'm certainly happy and open for a discussion about to look at what authority they have and regarding the budget. But I think for right now, we have a bill in front of us that they've asked us to submit and approve. And again, I'll look at the record if I can to check if that was unanimous or not. If I'm not mistaken, it was. So again, they're asking us to do something from there, but I just want to make sure that everyone kind of understands our roles. Again, we have different philosophies, other things, we can certainly change things, but ultimately, I think the process is the way it is. And if we do need to change it for the future, there's a way to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilwoman Rodvian. You stated my frustrations very eloquently, better than I probably could have stated them. So I'm just here to say I agree.
Anyone else? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just, on that note, Mr. Sheknovich, I want to thank you for answering all these tough questions this evening. And I hope that the elected board members are watching and understand that we are frustrated here on the council at this point. So, thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District Two. I want to echo the sentiments of Mr. Pruski. As former Board of Education members, and this is our third budget as a council, this is a déjà vu conversation. We've had the same conversation. We did not have the same level of discourse over the county fourth quarter transfer, but we seem to be concerning ourselves with the fourth quarter transfer of a bill of the BOE that passed unanimously May 19th. I watched the meeting. I've seen the documents. I don't know what else to say. They're an independent body. And yes, we are the final fiscal authority, but when you're talking about 0.15% of money in different categories of the BOE budget, this is just the way accounting works. So can we, hopefully, we're going to make a vote here in a second and pass this, so Mr. Sheknovich can go home.
Anyone else? I think I'll hold my own comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Madam Chair, I just want to acknowledge there's a, I'm getting a lot of messages about people losing cable temporarily. I believe it's probably related to the storm, but I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
I will call the roll. Ms. Hare?
Hi.
Ms. Pickard?
Hi.
Mr. Volkey?
Hi.
Mr. Pruski?
Hi.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
I'm going to vote aye, but just really express the sentiment that if the county council needs to be removed from this role, and we want to put all of the the power in this decision-making with the Board of Education, we should do that by state law, and rather than, you know, leaving the council in this part of the process when we really don't have, we're really in a bind in terms of how we're able to vote. With that, of course, I will support this bill. Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Because this is an emergency bill, Bill Number Fifty-three Twenty-One, as we just amended it, can be voted on tonight. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number Fifty-three Twenty-One as amended.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number Fifty-three Twenty-One has passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Before we go to the next bill, I'm just going to take a moment of privilege to inform you all. I received a message from Bishop Palmer, who says that this afternoon, he had a medical emergency with one of his granddaughters, and that's why he had to miss the meeting. So he would be more than honored to give the invitation in the near future, and I'm sure we all send our thousand prayers to his granddaughter, who is apparently now home resting. With that, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number Fifty-four Twenty-One.
Bill Number Fifty-four Twenty-One, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget Community Benefit Program Grants for Council Council Manic Districts.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. To start with, this bill, the genesis for the idea comes out of the transition report for the county executives' transition committees, specifically the responsive government portion of the transition committees. It was recommendation number five, and I'll read it to you because I have it in front of me. Excuse me. The recommendation, which this committee was led by former Councilman Jerry Walker, was to increase participatory budgeting and funding for projects that local residents feel are important, propose a charter amendment that establishes a special category/fund within the budget to permit an individual council member to propose spending a limited and clearly defined pool of revenue within their jurisdiction. So that is the genesis for this bill. The idea with this bill is that if the county executive elects in his budget or her budget, what have you, but if the county executive determines that they'd like to fund this, they can. What they can do is put aside a pot of money, and that pot of money would need to be divided between the seven council districts equally. So, for example, if the county executive was to say, here's seventy thousand dollars, ten thousand for each of the council districts. Basically, the intent would be that the county executive could put that money there. The council members could come in and say, these are some projects in my district that I would like to see funded. They can give that information to the county executive, and then the county executive could fund those in the budget. So it would create a way for the council members to be a little more involved in the creation of the budget with sort of some small grant projects in each of our respective districts. Again, this is not binding. The county executive could choose to fund none of this. They could say, we don't want to do this at all. Or they could choose to fund some of it. It's entirely within their prerogative. So that's the idea here is to kind of bring this to light. You know, I I think that this came out of other council members' time on the council, understanding that sometimes there are sort of small, neat, little ideas in your district that you may want to see funded, that don't necessarily warrant a huge, you know, project in and of themselves, but maybe they would just be something that would be nice for you to be able to support. And so this would allow us to be involved in understanding a little bit more some of the groups in our area that might want that funding, again, on a small level, and allow us to be involved in it. One point, so we've we've spent a long time on this bill. Candidly, we spent almost two years working on this bill. One of the points in it that I think should be addressed is that we will not be vetting these grants. So we, as the council members, will not have to individually review this and determine whether or not the grant meets the requirements for the county or not. We would simply say to the county executive, these are some things that we think might be good in terms of, this is a project we'd like to see you grant fund, and we could have people send those applications to us or give us those requests. But ultimately, the Budget Office is going to have to go through and actually determine if these grants do qualify and if they should be funded. So it's not going to put the council members in a position where we're independently vetting or verifying information in grant funding. That's an important piece of this, because I know that was a concern that the Office of Law and some others had about this bill. So that, I believe, covers it at a kind of high level. If you have additional questions, happy to answer.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Sticking with me is Mr. Teru from Budget, and is Blair Klausmeyer from the Office of Law. Councilman Volkey, interesting to hear you've been working on this for two years. I believe this is our first conversation on on this idea. Appreciate the review of our transition report. There were a lot of very good ideas that came out of it. Former Councilman Walker did a fantastic job leading that leading that subcommittee, I think we called it. And, you know, as we've we've looked at this idea, you know, the county executive has not yet brought forward the recommendation from that committee. There's a number of recommendations from our transition report, which we have brought forward, a number that we haven't. The strategy behind the transition team was to take a holistic look at all of county government, get very, very smart people together from all political parties, all backgrounds, all expertise, and and come forward with ideas. And the county executive then determines which ones to implement, which ones to that need legislation to be brought before this body. So you you stated that council members would not vet the projects, and I think that's important. Previous administrations had addressed grants in a number of different ways. And this county executive has built a very transparent, and we believe, extremely robust review process. That was not always the case. And you can go online, I think you can, if you Google AA County Community Grant on the county website, you will see a robust application portal, guidelines, review processes. None of that is is necessarily required under your bill. So what I think the administration would say at this point is we are intrigued by the idea, but we don't believe this idea is right, and at this time, we're not supporting it.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D Two. I I have, I'm intrigued by this bill as well. I have many, many questions. I think you answered some, Mr. Volkey, regarding the review process, because that was one of my biggest concerns. Were we now going to be launching our own grant application and review process? Was that going to be done individually, seven different ways? Was it going to be something our collective staff was going to take on as a new new role in their work? But if you're, it's not clear in the bill. What you've just said was nonprofits that apply for the current community grant program would come to us, we'd put our thumb on a couple and say, we like this one the best? Is that, was that the intention? Because I'm not following. I feel like I'm being asked to pick my favorite child. And I'm concerned that that could get messy. But I'm, if you could elaborate on the intent, and then if the intent is actually stated in the bill, that would be helpful.
Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I would not ask you, Councilwoman Pickard, to pick your favorite child. I know that's a tough thing to do. I wouldn't want to have to do it. So with that, the idea is, sure, if there was a nonprofit in your district, and you did want to kind of push that forward, that's fine. But I'm even thinking smaller than than potentially even nonprofits. If you had a community group that came to you and said, like, hey, you know, we want to do something in this little community park or something like that, you would have the ability through this, as long as they meet the vetting through the Budget Office, that it's an appropriate use of funds, and they've got safeguards in place, you would be able to, you know, put that forward and say to the county exec, here's something I think that you might want to invest in. So the idea is, we we can't possibly, we don't have the resources as council members to vet these or try to figure out, you know, if people are doing things that are on the up and up, or if they're doing something, you know, and just trying to get money out of the council member that, you know, is is not an appropriate use of funds. That's obviously something the administration, the Budget Office is going to have to work on. But the idea here is, if the county exec puts this pot of money aside and says, go ahead, you know, you can, you can give us projects that you want to see, it would give us the ability to put something in and be a little more involved in the process.
Anyone else? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to add, sort of for context, currently, any council member can advocate for any funding in the budget. This county executive has made a concerted effort to meet with every member of the council well before the introduction of the budget. If there are any projects that any member of the council would like to see funding for, there is a a process now whereby you can advocate for it.
Ms. Schuet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Linda Schuet, Legislative Counsel for the County Council. One of the things I just want to point out for informational purposes is that the current law does not allow the giving of giving out of grants by the county to organizations unless they're located in a very specific area. So not all organizations within the county have the ability to receive grants. If you look at the bill, on page two of the bill, fourteen, I mean, four eleven one oh nine B, it talks about how the grants can only be active in the following area in the southwest portion of the county. And then it goes on to say from Merrill Room Four, where it enters the county, and then off to Westerly. It goes through a long description of the area of the county that can where organizations can receive grants. So one of the things that this bill does is open it up so that grants are available in every council manic district. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barron.
I I think we need to respond to that. I'm going to ask Ms. Blair Klausmeyer to speak to it a little bit. I don't believe that's entirely accurate. Specific to that community grant project, yes, those two areas, but grants can also be approved by this council, which is how we have done it in previous budgets and how previous county execs have done it.
Yeah, Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. So this particular provision of the budget, I mean, I'm sorry, of the code, relates to a community benefit program for community associations to upgrade or improve their subdivisions or communities. And it is, yes, limited to a couple of areas in the county that are specified in this particular section. That said, this is really the only place in the code where the giving of grants, specific grants are, is addressed. There is another, there is money budgeted for other types of grants that are not, that don't necessarily go to nonprofit community associations to improve or upgrade their subdivisions or communities. That go to other types of entities for other purposes. And that has been, they've been historically given out over the years based on amounts budgeted for those grants. Grant programs.
Thank you, Ms. Klausmeyer. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Barron, I'm hoping you can expand a little bit on the comment that this isn't yet ripe. I mean, typically, when I think of that, I think of something being premature. And I, I'm not sure I understand that comment. And I just, I'm looking at the bill, and I'm looking at, I mean, it's a relatively small dollar value. It might enable some communities that otherwise might not get on the county executive's map for budgeting purposes. It might get that ability. I think this could be very meaningful to some communities. So I'm trying to understand what you mean by not yet ripe.
Pete Barron with the administration, happy to to try to tackle that, Councilwoman Hare. I I think if you look at the county exec's transition team report, it actually notes that a dedicated pool of revenue be identified for for grants like this. This bill doesn't address revenue. And considering some of the concerns that have been very publicly stated, it is interesting to me that we are talking about adding potentially seventy thousand dollars to the county budget without identifying where that revenue would come from. So that that's along the lines of what I meant.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. One of the things I was struck by, Mr. Barron, was your comment that we haven't discussed this. So I've been scrolling through my email because I know I started working on this bill with Ms. Blair Klausmeyer in October of 2019. And I know then it kind of took a long time to get an iteration, and then Ms. Schuet picked it up. But in February of this year, we sent you all a draft of this bill. I'm looking at the email where we talked about, we've worked on this for many months, and we copied all the attorneys, and we said exactly what the bill did. You all said you would take a look. And then in March, you all came back and said you had no comments on the structure of the bill. And I wasn't really clear on what that meant. But then we went ahead, and we did move forward, and we introduced this bill. And I haven't heard from anybody in the last month since this bill's been sitting out there. So I guess I'm not quite clear on how we didn't have a conversation or how this is any kind of a surprise to the administration, because I shared this bill with you guys in February, and I haven't heard hide nor hair as to whether you had any issue with it. So I'm just a little struck by that.
Pete Barron with the administration, you may be correct and might have, might have misstated the veracity that we've never, we've never had a verbal conversation. Yes, there was an email. Yes, we had, we had some, we didn't have any comments on the structure. The bill's legal. You're the final fiscal authority. If if you wanted to do this, we have policy concerns. And I think, you know, happy to have a longer conversation, especially considering the genesis of this came from a Pittman transition report, as you claim. You know, we don't have a, a, we did not have a long conversation of whether this was wise policy. I just said the structure of the bill was fine. And I am recalling that now. So I apologize for misstating.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think this is my last question and comment. I just want to make sure, Mr. Barron was talking about this is adding seventy thousand dollars to the budget. None of this is obligated to be funded, right? This is sort of, we talk about a tool in the toolbox all the time. This is something that a county executive could choose to fund in any given year. And it looks like you either fund it for all districts or none. But but certainly in a year where there is not funding available or where otherwise, you know, overextended from a cash standpoint, this is, you're not obligated to put this money in here. Right? Schuet, maybe you can confirm that for me.
Pete Barron with the administration, sorry, Ms. Schuet, but that's correct. We don't, we don't have to put the money in. But I think you create an expectation that every council member has a ten thousand dollar fund to recommend. That's going to create a pressure that the budget always has that seventy thousand dollars in.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, District Two. So in, on page three, on the last page of the bill, it says, the county executive may award grants to an eligible association or organization as requested by the council member in the amount requested by the council member not to exceed ten thousand dollars. So is that a ten thousand dollars per grantee? Or is that ten thousand dollars per council manic district? And if I were to choose a grantee, do they have to be, how, does their organization need to have their business address in my district as well as serve my district? Or can I? district as well as serve my district? Or can I choose an organization that serves my district, but maybe is housed in Laurel? Or, and then, I have a lot of questions. So, then, so I read this, that this was in, this was part of the community grants, county executives' community grants program that ACDS administers, that I know we spend a lot of time in my office directing different organizations too. So, but you're saying this is, that's not really a, but I'm understanding that you've, maybe the intent is different. This is a new program. Sorry, that was a lot of questions. I apologize.
Ms. Schuet, do you want to respond to that? I know you waved your flag, or perhaps Mr. Volkey can respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Linda Schuet, Legislative Council. I had a question with respect to the previous question, the previous point, so I let that go. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try to answer Councilwoman Pickard's questions to the extent I can. And if I fail on it, I'm sure someone will hopefully help bail me out. The 10,000, as I understand it, Councilwoman Pickard, is per organization. So, that would be the maximum. That's, the idea here is, again, these are, these are smallish grants, comparatively speaking, in the budget. So, these are not, you know, the couple hundred thousand dollar grants that sometimes go out, or even 50,000 or 60,000. It's up to 10. It would be dictated in terms of the amount by how much the county executive funds. So, for instance, the county executive said, I'm only going to put $6,000 in here, you wouldn't be able to spend 10, because the max you have is the six. And so, you wouldn't even come into that, that issue. In terms of the question of whether they serve your district or are located in your district, we didn't really specify that. And I think there's a policy reason for why not to, which is frankly, that you, as the council member, have the best idea of what is going to serve your district best. So, to the extent that there's an organization that is outside your district, but is doing great work in your district, and you think, I want to support this organization, you're obviously going to know that. And you're going to know it better, potentially, than maybe others, since you do represent that area. So, that's the idea there. I did also just want to add, if I may, one thing. Mr. Barron, when we'd sent you this email back on February 16th, I'm looking at it, it says clearly in there, the idea comes from the county executive's transition report. So, I think we advised at least four months ago that this was something that was coming out of the transition report, and, and that, you know, we were looking to do this, and we were looking for comments. So, I hope it wasn't a surprise to you all, because we tried to give you at least fair warning on what we were doing. Thanks.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D2. So, I have, I have a couple, I have one more question. So, if the county council is now going to, has the potential, if this were to be incorporated into the code, to recommend potential grants, this might be a question for the Office of Law, or someone. Do we need to concern ourselves with any conflict of interest or ethics situations, as far as friends that sit on nonprofit boards, or our own neighborhood community associations, or is, are we, can, is there some way to be insulated from that concern? I'll leave it at that.
Lori Blair Klausmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Certainly, the conflict of interest provisions of the ethics law would apply to this situation, the same as applied to any other situation within county government.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 5421. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions of testimony on this bill.
And we do not have anyone sign up to speak on Bill Number 5421. The public hearing on Bill Number 5421 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5421.
Bill Number 5421, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Community Benefit Program Grants for Council-Matic Districts.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. In light of the conversation this evening, and if those at home are wondering why all the questions are being asked right now, we did not have a work session during budget. I'd like to make a motion to hold the vote on this until our July 6 meeting. And perhaps the administration will be able to catch up on emails, and council members can ask some, some additional questions.
Is there a second?
Rodby, in second.
Madam Secretary, please call the rule on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 5421 until July 6.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodby?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Six, in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill 5421 until the July 6 meeting has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to recess for approximately 10 minutes, as we do have a live captioner this evening, and we need to take our scheduled breaks?
Motion to recess.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Pruski.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, shall we begin recess until 7:45 or 7:50?
How about if we give our captioner a full 15-minute break?
Okay, 7:51 it is. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Here.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Shewett.
Present.
Mr. Gibson.
Present.
Madam Chair, everyone is still here with us.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3121.
Resolution Number 3121, Resolution Approving the Nomination of a Member to the Anorundel County Human Relations Commission.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me is our Boards and Commissions Coordinator, Ms. Megan Brown, and from Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Resolution 3121 appoints Jacayla L. Hall to the Human Relations Commission for Anorundel County. She will serve the rema- if this resolution is approved, she will serve the remainder of the term ending November 17, 2021, which is fulfilling a vacancy, and to serve a full term, which would end November 17, 2024. Ms. Hall is a passionate criminal justice and human rights advocate. She lives in the county and currently resides in District 7. This is the District 7 HRCC. If you have any questions, our Commission- our Boards and Commissions Coordinator, Ms. Brown, is ably ready to answer them.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to give a little bit of additional background. I had the opportunity to to meet with Ms. Call and speak to her on a number of issues. Most actually impressive to me was her determination and her dedication to her community. And you may all recall during the budget hearings, I actually asked some questions of Wreckin' Parks about a playground at Sands Road Park. It was her testimony at the District 7 Town Hall during the budget season that first brought that particular project and need to my attention in this year's budget. And so, you know, I've interacted with her on a number of occasions for this. She's very motivated. I think she will be an asset to the Commission.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3121. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one submission of testimony through the online tool. It was seen by the entire council. It was added to the record, and a copy is posted online.
Thank you. And do we have any individuals signed up to speak on this resolution?
Madam Chair, we did have Patricia Lynch sign up. I do not see her name here, but let me do a quick check of the telephone numbers here. I don't see a telephone number either that matches the one that she used to register. I think it's fair to say that Ms. Lynch is not in attendance.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Ms. Lynch lives in the 5th District and has been very involved in Resolution, the next Resolution, 32, I believe. I think that that was probably a sign-up error.
Indeed, that's what we were thinking in-house too, but just to be safe, we thought we'd still read it out as part of this public hearing. The public hearing on Resolution Number 31 is- 3121 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3121.
Resolution Number 3121, Resolution Approving the Nomination of a Member to the Anorundel County Human Relations Commission.
Is there any further discussion? Well, I'm sure on behalf of many of my colleagues, we applaud Ms. Call in standing up to serve on this Commission. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3121.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 3121 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3221.
Resolution Number 3221, Resolution in Opposition to Preparing a Final Environmental Impact Statement and Record of Decision for the Third Span of the Chesapeake Bay Bridge.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. This resolution really speaks for itself, representing the district where the western landing site of the Bay Bridge is located. Most residents of the 5th District know all too well what a weather event, police activity, a disabled vehicle, or an accident on either the Bay Bridge or the approaching corridors can have on the ability to complete daily activities like picking up your kids from school, getting home from work, running an errand, or any list of daily activities the county residents take part in. These incidents can halt traffic and leave people stranded for hours. The study's purpose and need statement was too narrow in scope and didn't take into consideration either of the approaching corridors, infrastructure, and the impacts on those who live, travel, and work in this area on a daily basis. There will be an amendment at the appropriate time, and I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Transportation Director, Mr. Robinson, and from Law, sticking with us, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. The County Executive has, I think, been quite vocal. There has been town halls. Councilwoman Fiedler joined the County Executive for a town hall, expressing some concerns with how this study has been crafted. The county submitted our comments through the process, and we remain committed to addressing the needs of the folks particularly impacted by Bay Bridge traffic and remain opposed to this approach. Ms. Rhodes or Mr. Robinson could answer any questions the council may have on the comments the County Executive submitted to the appropriate agencies.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I was not involved in this resolution, but actually for quite some time, I've been speaking with folks about these engineering concerns that seem like they're being ignored, particularly the WHERES provision here that talks about how we're not considering the incoming and outgoing infrastructure from the bridge. That the way it's been considered so far, as best I can tell, and from going to meetings and whatnot, they're looking at a closed system, right? They're looking at the capacity of the existing bridge and the capacity of a new bridge and what traffic that might alleviate. And no one is really looking at what happens immediately off the bridge. So they're looking at sort of widening the bowl of the funnel but keeping the spout the same size. And you still end up with a massive backlog to me. And the second kind of fallacy that I've always seen through a lot of this is that everyone's assuming in the study that people are starting at point A and going to point B, and point A is right before the existing bridge, and point B is right after the existing bridge. And as a practical matter, I don't think that's the case. We've got people coming from all over, going to, you know, all different points on the east, on the eastern coast. So, I mean, I think asking them to reconsider the needs and purpose statement makes a lot of sense, and to really make sure that they're looking at not just traffic on the bridge and what we can do to alleviate that, but look at the whole corridor before and afterwards, and really come up with an infrastructure solution that addresses everything.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District 6. So, you know, I think this is something that I've this resolution is something that I've been interested in for a while. I think I didn't take a closer look at it until more recently, just simply because we've been wrapped up in budget and other things. But this actually, I know it doesn't hold a candle to the kind of impact that happens in District 5, but District 6, even though the closest interstate or the closest interchange on Highway 50 to the Bay Bridge is fully 10 miles away from the Bay Bridge, we are increasingly impacted by the traffic, the same kinds of traffic that my colleague mentioned, whether it's a weather event, whether it's a wreck, whether it's police activity. We are increasingly impacted in District 6, and not just along 50, but in the city of Annapolis. I shared some photos that I would like, if possible, could be displayed on the screen to just give a sample of what happened in the city limits of Annapolis, not this Friday, three days ago, but the previous Friday. Okay, so this is the road right next to the stadium. This is Baragut Road. And you would think that this is the kind of traffic that you might see like during a football game, but this was traffic from an incident on Route 50, and it was completely backed up. And it was a Friday afternoon, but it started one in the afternoon or so, maybe even earlier, and went through rush hour. So there's one. This is going towards Westgate Circle. You can see the traffic is completely backed up in both directions, pretty much stopped in both directions. People looking for alternate routes to get to the Bay Bridge, even well into the city limits. And there's one more. And next one, please? That, yes, this one. So this is on Cedar Park. This is another one of the roads that goes around the stadium. And again, total gridlock, with nothing more than a traffic event and a weather, and some bad weather. We had a repeat of it three days ago this Friday. It wasn't quite as severe. We actually had a repeat of it this afternoon that I happened to notice because I was looking for directions on something something unrelated, and I noticed on my Google Traffic app that it I was like, oh, my goodness, how long would it take me to get seeing some backup from exit, from Exit 24, which is about 10 miles from the bridge? The estimated time by Google Maps was 55 minutes, and that was on a Monday for no apparent reason. So, you know, and we're not impacted the way District 5 is, but it is becoming a more regular and more serious problem in District 6 as well. And the idea of putting other span, as my colleague said, out the infrastructure to the roads leading up to the bridge and leaving the bridge seems just like a very irresponsible way. You know, the need for getting folks from one side of the bay to the other.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3231. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We actually received nine submissions of testimony on this resolution that was seen by the council. It's been added to the record. It is also posted online on the council's website.
Thank you. And we have at least one individual signed up to speak on this resolution. Remarks will be loaded in two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Britt Griswold.
Hello, I'm Britt Griswold. I live at 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland. I want to thank Councilwoman Fiedler for introducing this resolution. As a resident of the Broad Neck, I support this resolution. It provides a voice for Anorundel County that's been missing when the under-resourced and narrowly focused study for a new Bay Bridge crossing was initiated. An inadequate purpose and need study, the heart of this process, focused very heavily on moving traffic without regard to the numerous other important aspects of a truly integrated solution to our problems with the bridge. The Bay Bridge Crossing Study answers only one question. It fixes the spot for a new bridge, no matter what other facts or technologies come to light in future studies. They will all be focused on bringing traffic to Anorundel County. Inadequate data and a lack of vision are the big problems with this study. The state does not have answers for the full dimensions of this problem. When bigger roads are the only tool used, the old saying comes to mind, "All problems look like a nail when you only use a hammer." With larger roads come more traffic. Experience in other parts of the country show that this will fill the new roads in short order, which makes the proposed solution no real solution at all. More traffic through central Anorundel County forces our county to dance to the tune of the eastern seaboard population, not to the citizens of Anorundel County. Please support this resolution to signal that a better, more complete solution to our needs should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. Madam Secretary, does it appear that we have Ms. Lynch?
Madam Chair, it does not. The telephone numbers that are showing do not match again to the registration that she submitted, and I do not see her name listed in our attendee room.
Thank you. The public hearing on Resolution Number 3221 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3221.
Resolution Number 3221, Resolution in Opposition to Preparing a Final Environmental Impact Statement and Record of Decision for the Third Span of the Chesapeake Bay Bridge.
We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment restates the process for draft and final environmental impact statements and public involvement in both.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You may speak to it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. The amendment just corrects the final environmental impact statement to be the draft environmental impact statement and adds some language for context.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
And second?
Fiedler's second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Administration supports.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Because this is a resolution, Resolution 3221, as recently amended, can be voted on tonight. Is there any further discussion? Okay, well, I'll take a turn. Sarah Lacy, District 1. I'd like to know why I should vote for this amendment, because during the voting on Resolution 2421, which was opposing the superconducting magnetic levitation train that's supposed to go through the northwestern part of the county and which will not reduce any traffic in the county, and has plenty of other negative aspects to it. I got no support from
Um, I got no support from any other council members except for Councilwoman Pickard. And I find it very difficult to decide how to vote on this particular resolution. Probably the simplest thing to do would be to abstain. Um, but I generally try not to abstain. And I think it's, um, you know, it's a lot to ask for me to vote on it when there's not the recognition that we are in fact one county. Um, what really is happening here is that our county is overdependent on individual transportation via car. We have too many cars going around in our, in our places, our routes, our loops, whatever, at the same time, and we're not investing in local transportation, mass transportation with buses, with light rail, with um, those other solutions to the degree that it would actually make a difference. Until we get the cars off the road, we're always going to have this problem. And so, um, I also have done the calculus. I know that my vote's not needed to pass this resolution, so it's not necessary for any justification to be given, but I have to say it's, you know, it's rather bitter. Does anyone else have anything to say?
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number thirty-two, twenty-one.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number thirty-two, twenty-one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Resolution Number thirty-three, twenty-one.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, for just one moment, I want, again, want to acknowledge that, um, a Rendell TV is still down, that they seem to have suffered, um, something with the, some problem with the equipment that they haven't been able to resolve. So I do want to acknowledge that cable and a Rendell TV on the internet is currently not viewable.
But our meeting is still being recorded, correct?
Yes, our meeting is still being recorded and anybody that is attending here in Zoom can watch it and listen as well. Anybody that has called in can also listen.
Okay, good to know. Um, and the resolution?
Yes, Resolution Number thirty-three, twenty-one. Resolution apologizing for civil rights violations that occurred under the administration of a former Anarundel County Executive.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your resolution. You go on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodvian, District Six. So, um, I really wanted to start out by saying, to the best of my ability, I worked with the drafters of this, uh, of, in our staff to make sure that the resolution was focused as much as possible on the individuals that were harmed and the harm they experienced. Um, you may notice that I left out the name of the former county executive. That was deliberate. Um, that, that, the, the former county executive has already, um, it had both a civil and a criminal suit, so that, this is not about the former county. This is about, uh, closing the loop with respect to, um, with respect to justice and doing what is right. Um, so again, the focus here is really on, um, just offering an apology to folks whose civil rights were violated um, in a, in a time in the past and to, um, to say that we're going to do better in the future. And I will give credit to both, um, uh, former county executive Laura Newman's administration, as well as our current administration, um, who made changes, um, with, or whom, under police department policy changes were made in response to the events and to the violations that occurred here. So again, the focus is on, um, acknowledging that what the county did, was involved here, uh, should not have happened and that um, rights were violated, people were harmed, and, um, we should always try and go forward doing the right thing.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron. Joining me is Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. Um, I will echo much of the, the sponsor's comments. Former county executive, uh, Laura Newman uh, took steps to, uh, strengthen, uh, procedures and policies. Uh, this administration also, um, took additional, uh, steps. I think, uh, elected officials hold a sacred trust and the abuse of any of that trust is appalling and, uh, the conduct, uh, from, uh, the previous county executive is something that I know is personally offensive to the current county executive and, uh, we support this resolution knowing that it is a statement of the county council.
Mr. Pruski?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, Councilman District Four. Um, so I don't know if people recall, uh, when we had the body camera, uh, testimony that I asked about policies, uh, and this does relate to this resolution. Um, just a matter of public record, uh, the acting chief at the time, Deputy Lowry, um, one of my questions to him was to prevent this from happening again. Certainly, this is, this resolution is about apology, but I think for the matter of the public record, how, how do we prevent regardless of who it is that this executive detail unit and other things have a reporting structure and have other things in place? And I want to be clear that many of you got the, uh, the communication uh, that was sent, uh, to Councilwoman Rodvian and others regarding the review that did occur. Uh, and I, I want to thank Deputy, well, now he's Deputy Chief Lowry, Acting Chief Lowry, um, for providing those updated procedures, because I think part of it was that, um, there's accountability and that includes everyone. Um, and, and of course, with this resolution, not only the people are involved, but the employees um, that were directed to do some of these things under their direction. When you're uh, under an employee and you, you obviously have to do that, and that includes police officers and other things that were in a very difficult situation. But again, I want to be clear, uh, regardless of the status of this resolution, I feel comfortable that the review that occurred, especially with the executive detail, that was solved, um, particularly with the policy review um, and the way things are reported and also making sure that people follow, uh, the Merrick Pub Public Information Act laws, reviews and other things. But again, I just want to make sure it's a matter of record. Um, when we originally had that public hearing, uh, that, that some of those issues were addressed, and I particularly want to thank and acknowledge uh, Deputy Chief Lowry for taking that lead to do that review, uh, particularly someone who was not in the system. He came from another uh, county and did, I consider, an independent review, which we really needed. So again, just a matter of the record. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, certainly, I, I'll agree with Mr. Barron that, um, you know, kind of misconduct from an elected official is, is appalling at any level. And my concern with this resolution is that in a sense, we are taking something that was under the judicial branch and reviewed by the judicial branch. And, um, we are sort of putting our judgment in there as a council. Um, I, I went and did a little bit of digging on some of the court files to try and find some of this information. And I, it looks like the information in this resolution is inconsistent with what the court found. And so I guess my question is for the sponsor. Was that intentional? I mean, are we, I, I'm, I'm concerned with making a statement at the council that is inconsistent with something that a court of law already found.
Ms. Rodvian?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, um, Councilwoman Hare for what I think is a, as a relevant question. Um, first off, I think it's important to note that there were actually two cases. There was both a civil and a criminal trial, um, for this situation. And as far as I know, there was only one, um, actually written opinion issued. But there were, there is a lot of, um, us about the criminal trial that explained what the judge offered in terms of, um, explanation, explanation, in terms of, um, finding there was no jury, the, uh, the defendant involved waived his right to a jury trial, and so it was a bench trial and that judge, you know, per explanations for the findings of guilt and those were not necessarily recorded in, uh, the civil trial. Um, I also think it's important to note that the civil trial is, is limited by what was limited by what um, individual plaintiffs were willing to step forward and, um, uh, actually in that, like, when it, when it ended up in trial, though you may have read that, um, a number of the original plaintiffs did not testify in that trial. I think that that poses a limitation, but there's still other, um, there are still other places where, um, information about this trial, about what happened, um, are available. I feel like as a, you, you're absolutely right. I, I feel like as a legislative body, we're not, we're not to sort of relitigate what, um, the judicial branch did. Um, this is really about, um, but this is really about making sure that, um, those that were harmed, um, have been, that the harm is acknowledged. Um, and that, you know, we are promising to go forward and not have something like this happen again. And I feel like um, both the former county executive we mentioned, um, Laura Newman, as well as our current administration and the police departments under their, um, umbrella took those steps. So even though you might not um, that you see in this resolution, in that opinion that was, is it is available in other.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I don't know if anybody else had the opportunity to speak with former county executive John Leopold. I did. Um, I spoke with him on the telephone because he is one of my constituents. I also had the opportunity to review the cases that were mentioned. Um, I had the opportunity to review the online docket. I had an opportunity to review the information provided by Deputy Chief Lowry, which was very instructive. And I had an opportunity to review the criminal case, uh, as well as some materials that I believe were provided by county, former county executive Leopold to all of the members of the council. I only know that because he mailed it by regular US mail and there were little checks next to everyone's name as to whether they got it or not. So I'm assuming everyone received the same thing. Um, one of the concerns that I heard was something about this never happening again, and I appreciate Councilman Pruski's comments because uh, he accurately hit that on the head. This won't happen again because all of these policies have been changed rightly and they were changed years ago, uh, under a prior administration that followed up this administration almost immediately. I do remember that time, uh, and I remember that trial and I also remember the selection of the next county executive. I remember being in the council chambers as that happened. Um, the concern about the judicial branch turning into the, well, the legislative turning into the judicial branch, I share that concern. And one of my biggest concerns, and it's why I'll be offering an amendment at the appropriate time, is that if we are going to state what happened in these court cases, let's make sure we state it accurately. And so I have tried to go through the resolution and make changes to ensure that the resolution is factually accurate with what happened. Um, that's one of the things that's a concern for me. I also, most importantly, am not entirely clear on why now over nine years after all of this took place, we are having this, um, we're having this discussion and why we're, we're kind of rehashing what is really uh, an unfortunate and distasteful chapter in Anarundel County's history and why, after the former county executive was ousted from office and went to jail and served the thirty days and was barred from running for election again and candidly did run in twenty eighteen, and I, along with some others, uh, slated up and ran against him and he got less than ten percent of the vote in the Republican primary. Um, so I just want to note that, that, that it was not as though there was some groundswell of support to bring him back into office. I'm just not clear why it is that we're continuing to have this discussion. So if I can get any clarity there, I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to respond. So the, you may have, uh, noted that the investigation, yes, there were some changes that were made under the, um, the very next county executive, county executive Laura Newman. But there were also county, uh, changes made under, um, the purview Chief Lowry and as, as he served as interim chief, um, for, under the administration and policy changes, um, were actually very, that investigation that he conducted was actually very recent, late in twenty twenty. So, um, it, while, you know, the, it or why, um, this, you know, are, are, you're absolutely correct. They are, um, you know, coming up on a decade old, um, there has been, um, more investigation that has taken place. And, um, with, with all of the court cases that, you know, again, deal with the former county executive, what has not happened is an apology to those who are harmed. And so that's the focus here, is to say what happened with, um, we don't think it should happen again. Um, I also want to clarify, you know, as, as a legislative body and as a resolution, um, we're not, we're not bound to, um, you know, we're not, we're not a fact-finding body. So what's laid out here is not necessarily thing that would be, um, used in a court of law. Um, it's, it's inflected way, and I don't think that makes it any less valid. Um, it, in a way, it allows us to be complete because we're not bound by evidentiary rules, we're not bound by, um, you know, plaintiffs deciding whether or not they're going to participate. Um, so in that way, that's, you know, that's the basis for, um, the, the language in this resolution. And again, the focus is on the apology. This is really not about the former county. This is about, um, offering um, a, a handout to the folks who were harmed and saying, uh, the county did wrong by you. This shouldn't happen again. And, um, this more made policy and, and perhaps we need to consider, um, codifying some of those in, in some way in the future. Um, but that's a conversation for another day. It's really about the, and closing that loop.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Councilwoman Rodvian, your, your last comment about we're not bound by the rules of evidence and things like that, I, I understand that, but I think there are very, very, very important reasons why our courts are set up the way they are and why, um, the rules of evidence are in place and all these other things, because the courts are tasked with making those fact-finding adjudications. And I think it's a very slippery slope. If after that has occurred, we come back and, and make statements about new facts or facts that the court didn't find, um, for almost any purpose, it's not, that's not our role. Um, and I, I mean, I think about this, I went back and looked, I think there's something like fifteen, um, elected officials in the last fifteen years who have served jail time, um, for a variety of things from bribery to, you know, misappropriation of funds, et cetera. And I'm not sure that we want to be in the position of going back through all of those and, um, and making additional statements or, or findings of fact for each of those people. So I'm just, I'm not sure that I agree that not being bound by the rules of evidence is a, is a good thing when we're talking about how we are conducting our proceedings here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I want to first say, um, I've worked with all of you for almost three years or three years now, and I like to think I know you, um, individually, and I don't think any one of us um, or any current elected officials in Anarundel County would even consider some of the accusations that went through the, um, criminal justice system. Um, I think it makes us all look bad when one, um, takes part in egregious activities. Having said that, um, uh, Councilwoman Rodvian, you made the statement that this wasn't about the previous, um, county executive. But in the first two lines, it says apologizing for civil rights violations that occurred under the administration of a former Anarundel County Executive. So I have a problem separating the two, saying it's not about that, when the first two lines of the resolution say it's about that. Um, so I'm stuck there and just from a practical standpoint, um, this is, you know, personal opinion, um, I would think that an apology coming from a defendant means more than coming from a body of people who weren't present or active in politics in this county, or maybe not all of us were not active in politics twelve years ago, but, um, and, and it's clear that that's not going to happen anytime soon. I know that, that the defendant in the case, um, has written letters and um, op-eds and, and defending the, the circumstances and things that took place several years ago. So I just don't know it's appropriate for this council in lieu of that to make an apology.
Ms. Rodvian and then Mr. Volkey?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to respond. Um, I actually would like to bring up a resolution, which was the very first resolution that I introduced in this council, and that was, and that we made for a lynching that happened over one hundred years ago. And I understand that that's very different senses. Um, but of course, a, a lynching that happened over one hundred years ago, um, was still, there was still some culpability. Um, I don't know if you remember the details, but, but basically, um, the the Rendell Center used to serve, or in that same spot, used to be, uh, county jail. And, um, the man who was ultimately lynched, um, did not have protection at that jail that he should have had. And people were basically able to kidnap him out of the jail and, um, And people were basically able to kidnap him out of the jail and, and kill him. His body was riddled with bullets and, you know, no person alive, in, in, at least that I certainly hope, working in county government today, had any, any responsibility. But there is still something to be said for acknowledging a wrong has happened, even if, even if you weren't personally involved, because, because you want to make sure that you are, you are calling and saying, we are not going to let that kind of wrong happen again. And so that's really what this is about, is to close, to, you know, just to close the loop and to acknowledge that people were harmed. I certainly would hope that, you know, no political opponent of mine would go and, and make, or use county resources to make a dossier for, you know, political purposes, using resources in an inappropriate way. And so I think it's really about just calling out that conduct, letting the people know, in particular, the people who are harmed, know that we do not condone that conduct. And we are sorry that it happened to you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I, I appreciate that reminder, Councilwoman Rodgian. And I actually thought about the same thing in putting together my comments. And one of the differences that I noted was former county executive John Leopold is very much alive, and if there was to be an apology or anything along those lines, he's got the capacity to do it. Obviously, for the lynchings that we passed the resolution to say that they were just absolutely wrong, though, as you said, nobody alive today that I'm aware of could have come in and said anything. And so it had to be a community voice. And on top of it, it wasn't just the failures at the, at the jail here in Annapolis. There were five lynchings, one of which was in my district at Magatee Bridge, where there was a lynching. And, and obviously, I'm not aware of anybody who could have come in and, and said, you know, we're sorry for what happened there. So it was why we, as a community, I think, had to speak as a voice, and we, as a council, had to speak as a voice a little bit differently than this situation where it's dealing with one individual, and that one individual's actions. The other was more of a community apology to the victims of those actions. But I do also want to note, so I pulled up and am looking at the Capital Gazette's coverage from August 22, 2016. The headline of that article is Judge Denies Compensation to Plaintiff in Leopold Civil Case. And in there, it's a, it's a couple of important things, I think, to note. One was that although Judge Aholt, who was the presiding judge in that case, did find nominal damages of $1 that were awarded to Mr. Snowden and Ms. Harris, they submitted legal fee requests, they were permitted to do, in the amount of $393,836. And as Judge Aholt said, the fee submission was, quote, "excessive and shocks the conscience of the court." Judge Aholt went on, in his decision, as reported in the Capitol, to further say that although the plaintiffs have, their claim to have exposed a widespread pattern of abuse of public trust by public officials in accessing highly sensitive and confidential information about individuals was not supported by the evidence presented at trial and was rejected by the court. So again, some of the concepts in here, that there was widespread abuse, that there was widespread violations of public trust. Again, Judge Aholt was saying, after he reviewed the evidence and heard this, he didn't find that that was in fact the case. There were 79 claims that were rejected out of the original 81. Only two claims were actually moved forward that had been presented in the civil case. And of those, Judge Aholt opined that the plaintiffs had met none of the requirements to be considered a prevailing party, to be able to get legal fees reimbursed. So as he said, "The fact that they achieved a verdict for nominal damages was at most a technical victory. The litigation did not result in gaining access to additional documents." So I'm just curious how far we're going in this resolution, vis a vis how far the court went after hearing all of this evidence and litigating this case for years, and yet we, as a public body, are making statements into the public record about what did or did not happen that could effectively supersede the judicial determinations in this case. So I'm, I'm really worried about that. Again, that's why I'm putting up the amendments at the appropriate time, excuse me. And I would, I would hope that my colleagues will support me because I'm trying to get this resolution to a more factually accurate place.
If I may, I may interject for a second before I lose these thoughts. Sarah Lacy, District One. I think the litigators on the council can appreciate that each case is about its own facts and turns on a lot of other factors they don't necessarily see in a court opinion or memorandum. We don't get to peek behind the curtain and see what decisions are made between attorneys and their clients, or to see how things go in discovery and whether or not cooperative witnesses will pull through for trial. We definitely didn't get to see any settlement negotiations or mediation that likely did occur in that case because we know it's the policy of our courts to hold those kinds of pre-trial resolutions, to try to encourage pre-trial resolution. And if a, if a case is so closely contested that it comes down to most of the claims being dismissed, but two are still upheld and nominal damages must be given, that's because those claims were proven to the appropriate standard of, of evidence. But it's about so much more. And I say that based on my own experience as a plaintiff's attorney. I can give you stories about three different clients who were each, two of whom were wrongfully convicted, and one who was wrongfully incarcerated, held by the state of Maryland, passed the date when it was mandatory by law that he be released. None of these three, although two of them got money, as far as settlements, none of them got apologies, and they all had to fight for their freedom. And they all had to then face the stain that's then on their future lives. They have to figure out what to do with it. And I think that a legislative body made up of folks who perhaps have a little bit of additional perspective than the legislative body that was sitting at the time of the events, can make an apology that is very meaningful to the people for whom the apology is intended. And I have to say, what does it cost us to, to do that, to make a legislative statement like that? As an apology, I think it actually sets a good precedent. People who don't have actual claims aren't going to come ask us for apologies. And with all due respect, county executive Leopold didn't apologize and is not going to apologize. That's not going to happen. And it's not about him personally apologizing. It is about this body reflecting the damage that was done by a public official, yes, of a different branch of government, but we're the ones who make those statements. So I'm perfectly comfortable supporting this resolution. Ms. Rodgian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This really is responding to my colleague from District Three's comments about the civil case. I also want to remind you, there was also a criminal case here, and the judge had much stronger terms in terms of, you know, in terms of condemning the conduct. I'm quoting, again, quoting from the Capitol, "The judge described the conduct as simply outrageous, egregious, and wildly beyond any authority he possessed or could reasonably thought he had obtained by virtue of his office." This, I, I tried to stay, I, I tried to, at the beginning, that this is not, that the focus here is about acknowledging those who were harmed, and that is the one thing that has not happened in all of this situation. You, in fact, even acknowledged that there were only nominal damages given to the two plaintiffs in the civil case that stuck it out to the end, and no apology came. And I think my colleague, or, I see, said it. When, it's really about a, a body of elected officials acknowledging what is right and wrong and what is acceptable and unacceptable conduct by elected officials, and for us to condemn conduct, and to say, going forward, we are, we are not going to accept that kind of conduct.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I just want to add one more point to this discussion. So again, going to that same Capital Gazette article that I noted from August of 2016, before the current administration was in office, before the new safeguards or protocols were put in place that were indicated as being there to ensure that this won't happen again. The very last two lines of this article note, for example, the current police chief, who at that time was Chief Tim Altamari, has pledged not to use the police department for political or unethical ends. And the last line of this is a quote from Mr. Snowden, where he says, quote, "I'm very confident that the system reforms that we were looking for have already been implemented." So I'm not exactly sure what this does that wasn't already done by the Newman administration in light of the reforms and changes that they made and the police department under Chief Altamari back in, prior to 2016, that led one of the plaintiffs in this case to indicate that the reforms that they were looking for by virtue of their litigation, that they'd already achieved those.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. This question is for Ms. Blair Klassmeyer. The way that this resolution is worded, does it prevent or prohibit any egregious actions by an elected official to any individual?
Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Does it prevent any, is that, was that the question? I'm sorry.
Is, yes, is the language of the resolution preventing or prohibiting egregious actions from an elected official towards any other individual if it were to pass? Because, because the way I read it is, it's an apology on past actions.
That's correct. That's the way I read it. And it's also a resolution, so I'm not sure it can do much more than that.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 3321. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one online submission and one mailed-in letter that has all been shared with the council, added to the record, and the online testimony posted online.
Thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on Resolution Number 3321. The public hearing on Resolution Number 3321 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 3321.
Resolution Number 3321. Resolution apologizing for civil rights violations that occurred under the administration of a former Anarundel County executive.
We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, when you're ready, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment revises the resolution to remove specific language regarding certain events of 2012, adds references to certain circuit court matters, and change terminology.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey, you're the sponsor. You may make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I've covered most of what my statement would be already. Effectively, the idea is to try to factually clarify certain portions of this resolution to ensure that they comport with what happened in the civil case, as well as the criminal case, and just to ensure that the resolution is accurate factually.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Volkey, so moved.
In a second.
Fiedler, second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Rodgian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodgian, District Six. So right off the bat, one of the things that I really can't accept this resolution is that it really narrows the apology to just one of the impacted individuals. While it wasn't in, it, it wasn't, you know, it, it didn't turn out to be part of the, the civil lawsuit, there were indeed at least 11 dossiers created, and we know that because the ACLU asked for them under the Maryland Public Information Act, and they received them. So, you know, to try and limit something simply based on the information that we learned from the court's, the court's opinion, I, I certainly understand the, you know, the thinking behind that because, you know, that's gone through a very formal process. But I, I don't think that means, since we are not a court of law, we are not a fact-finding body, it doesn't, it, I certainly don't think that that requires us to limit ourselves simply to what was found in that opinion. I mean, and there, there are additional details that we, we fairly can say we, because of other surrounding context.
Okay, you froze there for a second, but I think you're done. Does anyone else have a comment? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I, I appreciate where Councilwoman Rodgian is coming from. I do. My concern just continues to be, we may not, not be a judicial body, but we are a body that speaks. We do create a public record when we speak, when we say things as a body by way of resolution. They are something that we are saying to the community, but also to history. And I want to ensure that whatever we're saying is accurate. And the nice thing about facts that have gone through the judicial process is that I feel with a high degree of certainty, those facts are true and that they are accurate. So to me, it seems like that is the way that we should be structuring this resolution to ensure that what we're saying, both now and in the future when it's reviewed, that we are not creating any ambiguity in the record.
Seeing no more flags. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler. I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler, I didn't catch your response.
Aye.
Ms. Rodgian.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment One has been defeated.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So as we go into voting on this resolution, I just want to say a few things. I, I'm happy that that dark time in our past has been corrected. The administration, after this administration questioned, did their due diligence. But this resolution doesn't do what the sponsor has said it does tonight. It is an apology. And I really don't feel, at this point in time, that it is appropriate for this council when all parties involved are still alive and able to make apologies or have communications between one another, as respectable adults should. They're able to do that. And I just don't see, at this point in time, why a vote on this resolution by this council is appropriate. So I won't be able to support this resolution this evening, but I do appreciate the efforts of the sponsor.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I, I want to thank the sponsor for opening up this discussion and, and all of us being able to, to talk about it. I think Councilwoman Lacy and I agree on the fact that there's a lot that may have gone on during this case, or, or both of these cases, that we are not privy to. We weren't in the courtroom. We don't know what was presented, what wasn't presented, what was, you know, discussed, what wasn't discussed. And so I think, at this point in time, it makes it impossible for us to substitute our judgment for a court of law to say that certain dossiers were, were kept, or that it was 11 people, when the ruling from the court and the information we have from the court, who spent all this time going through day by day, witness by witness, considering all aspects, we're, we're up here not in the same position. I just don't think that we can make that kind of a, I, I don't think we can make factual statements at this point that are inconsistent with what the court said. And so for that reason, I, I can't support this resolution.
Ms. Rodgian.
I'm Chair Lisa Rodgian, District Six. So I, I guess I would really still argue that there's, in this resolution, there's nothing that's inconsistent with what the courts have said because things come from the criminal aspect of the case. And to Ms. Fiedler's point, this, I, I think I said from the beginning, the intent here is the apology, is to say, and I will mention that one of the individuals who had a dossier created about them, and I can see, can you guys still hear me? Okay, good. My, I just got an internet unstable message. One of the, who had a dossier created about them was actually the former councilman from District Three, who held your seat, Mr. Volkey, and he is now deceased. So, you know, I, I understand the idea of wanting to wait until, you know, the opportunity to be giving apology has passed, you know, maybe we would to wait for that person to pass away. But I, and I really don't, I don't think we need to wait. I think we can acknowledge that this conduct and, and do exactly what this resolution said. The County Council of Anarundel County, Maryland, here pledges to all citizens of Anarundel County for the abuses that occurred by a former administration, including in particular, the targeted individuals. So I feel like that's really all this is intended to do, is to say, this shouldn't have happened. And I, I feel like this should be, this should be an easy one. So I, I ask for your for your votes.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodvian. I know that Mr. Redmond was one of the folks who was alleged to be targeted. You know, it's interesting to me that we are going to vote on an apology for things that happened long before any of us were on the council, and in fact, before some of us who are even on the council even lived in this county and even know who John Leopold was. So I just find the whole thing so interesting that we are back in this piece of history. And candidly, you know, I've heard from some people who were on the inside part of the administration, and the fact that this resolution has come up is very difficult for them, the fact that we're sort of rehashing this history. So not only is it for the people who are the named victims, or, you know, folks who had these, I think you're calling them the targeted individuals, but there were other people who were inside the administration who probably felt targeted as well and had to speak up. And this is uncomfortable in a lot of ways for them. So I ultimately just, I can't support the factual inaccuracies that are in here. I also don't understand the timing of why we're going back and dealing with this. And I don't know why we're substituting our judgment and our recitation of the facts for those of two pretty esteemed judges between Judge Sweeney, who handled the criminal case, and then Judge Ahal, who handled the civil case. They took extensive time to deal with these issues in a correct forum, which is the judicial forum. And they went through all of this and they made findings. And so I think that, given that we weren't able to correct the factual inaccuracies that I put forward in my amendment, I can't support this, this resolution.
Are there any other final comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 3321.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye. And I really would like to, the notion that there are factual inaccuracies. The courts are not the only places where facts and truth can be found.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution Number 3321 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, she do adjourn, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until Tuesday, July 6, at 7:00 PM. This will be our first in-person meeting in our chambers since last year. You can find important information about this meeting on the council website at aacounty.org.